Okay, we'll get started if you could stand for the pledge.
Pledge lead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing for one minute, please, a moment of silence in memory of Riverhead resident and NYPD detective Brian Simonson who was laid to rest yesterday. Thank you. Okay, welcome to the Thursday, February twenty first, two thousand nineteen Town and Riverhead Planning Board meeting. First item on the agenda today is a discussion item for Riverhead Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. Second.
Switch.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just jump right in, I guess.
Yeah, you're gonna sit there, yeah, okay. Good afternoon everyone.
Hello, how are you? Good, how are you?
Good.
So we've got Mr. Deloco and Mr. Strollo today, right?
Yeah, I think he's here.
And the attorneys, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Judd, right?
Yeah. Okay, so basically this application is to remove the existing building used as an office for truck sales and construct a new thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five foot, two-story car dealership building with all new site improvements. The site is a hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and seventy-three square feet. It's located at seventeen sixteen Old Country Road in the Business Center zoning district. In my report, I did kind of go into the lot line modification, which would make the site larger to accommodate a larger building. I was not involved with that lot line modification and we couldn't find the signed plat at the time, so we thought maybe the resolution to approve it had expired, but just recently I received a copy of the signed plat from the attorney. So it looks like it was actually signed. But some of the conditions, like deeds and things like that, I don't have in the file. So I think, I think it can be worked out before anything is approved, shouldn't be an issue. Cause the, actually the lots were merged by the assessor's office. So it does have one tax map number now, not two tax map numbers. Just as a kind of a reminder, part of Foxwoods property was conveyed to this property. So the portion along the Costco property to the west. So, where was I? So I don't think that should be an issue.
There's still a utility easement there though, right?
Um, I don't have a copy of the easements, um, but there, there is a water line, um, and that was one of the-
I just saw with the, I just saw with the deed with the water line easements to the planning department when it got reported, so I can forward, I'll email, it's getting emailed to me.
So, um, and these, these were things that Laura Calamita had also requested as part of the title report. So I'm sure it wouldn't have been signed without all the conditions being met. So on page three of the report, if you're following along, I do show the existing lot. And Jim had updated the tax map number and the meets and bounds on the plans I had provided to the planning board. So basically this is on the north side of Old Country Road. It's, to the east is a strip shopping center and to the north of that shopping center is an office park. Um, and then to the north of the property is Millbrook Mobile Home Park. And to the west is the shopping center with Costco. So I did provide some pictures on pages three, four, and five. There's some wooded area to the east along the property line that would be removed for the proposed improvements. And there are some trees to the north with oaks and pitch pines, which are proposed to be retained as part of their transitional yard, which is required due to the residential use to the north. There is a stockade fence along the prop, the northern property line, but it has gaps in it. And according to my meeting with Jim last week, it's owned by Millbrook. And one of the requirements for the transitional yard is to have a fence that's provided and maintained by the commercial property owner. So that would have to be added. So.
Karen, that property to the north, you said that's Millbrook?
To the north here, yep.
So is that their maintenance yard that's not, uh?
No, there's actual units there, right by the fence.
There is, okay.
Yeah, there is a barn right in the corner.
That looks like the barn right there.
There is one in the corner there, in the southwest corner.
Okay.
Um, the majority of the site is within the Riverhead sewer district, except the portion that was conveyed to the west that was part of Foxwoods. Is not part of the sewer district. So that would have to be added to the parking, excuse me, to the sewer district. So the administrative site plan for Riverhead Dodge to make, this was actually, go back a little bit. This was a recreational facility with adding cages and whatnot. And then in two thousand and five, there was an administrative site plan approved for Riverhead Dodge to convert it to an automobile dealership. So, and there were a couple of, you know, conditions of that. It would be null and void if a new site plan for a new automobile or dealership with a new building of approximately twenty-six thousand square feet in size was not submitted within three months. That all the existing building structures and site improvements would be removed within two years of the date of approval. There was an extension given. And then an application was submitted for approximately a twenty-six thousand square foot motor vehicle dealership. And that was reviewed by planning staff in a November twenty fifteen memo. That plan was not followed up on. The site plan for a new dealership with the currently proposed thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five square foot building was received September twenty eighteen and was considered complete in November of twenty eighteen. And it looks like the demolition permit for the last recreational piece of equipment there was, was given fairly recently and that's been demolished. And in the pictures I provided, you could see the pieces of concrete are still on, we're, we're still on site, I don't know if they're still there, but. So that's pretty much the background. So the use is allowed, I just wanted Jim to clarify on the plans that the sale of used vehicles is accessory to the new vehicle sales. As far as SECPRA goes, it's classified as unlisted with coordinated review optional and not recommended. That's pretty much because this has been a car dealership already. So if the board would like, I would recommend after we get some revised plans that we follow up with SECPRA and schedule the public hearing. And as far as elevations of the building goes, there's a new policy that we have the planning board look at them before we go to the ARBs. So I just wanted the board to, I've given them to the board, but I just wanted you to let me know if it's okay to go to the ARB. Pretty much your standard car dealership building.
Jeep, Ram, Dodge, Chrysler, where you gonna put all those cars on the second story? Where you gonna put all the cars on the second story of the building?
No, they're just gonna be officers.
Oh, officers?
Yeah.
I'm only joking about the cars.
I have the plans if you wanna. This is the policy now, so.
This is, yes. Because I guess there were some instances where the ARB was going along their way and then the planning board was not satisfied with.
True.
And the planning board has the final authority, so.
All of your services will be transferred over here too?
Yes, I don't, we haven't decided what our final, what we'll finally do with the building on Main Street. We're anticipating that we probably will need to keep it as an accessory to the Route fifty-eight piece. The whole idea is to move everything, be in one place. I'm anticipating that because of the problem with storing cars in Riverhead, that I'll probably continue to store cars at West Main Street. But I don't anticipate operating much there unless I have overflow, which would be great.
Yeah.
Mr. Strollo, he just, gentlemen, it runs the camera, he asked if you could just speak up, cause we're not, the microphone's here, they're not picking you up.
Okay. Okay.
What you say is very important, if you wanna hear it.
So I'll, I'll forward this to the ARB at this point.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay. So as far as variances goes, I'm seeing, it looks like they'll need a variance for exceeding the amount of impervious surface that's allowed, which is seventy-five percent. It's currently listed as seventy-nine point oh three percent, but it may change depending on some of the input that's provided by the planning board. So I wanted to make sure that we talk to the board before, and make any revisions before they go to CBA. As far as sewer district, I'm recommending that they request extension of the sewer district boundary to encompass the entire site, which is what the sewer district superintendent requested. And that can be made a condition of obtaining a building permit, if that's acceptable to the board.
The lot already has a sewer connection over there, huh?
I did file a, I did file a petition with the town clerk's office for expansion. I did get a letter from the superintendent about paying the fee for a consultant to pay for, to pay for the consulting services. My client's in the process of preparing that check and I listened to that.
Yeah, basically, they are connected to sewers, but it's the policy of the sewer district that this portion of the property has to be included in the sewer district as well.
Of course, of the, of the, the additional land.
Correct, yeah. Um, as far as stormwater, there's a SWIP will be required because they're disturbing one acre or more of the site. The town engineer's comments were included in the report, adding some contours, providing a lighting photometric grid on the plans, which Jim said he would talk to the town engineer and resolve those. As far as parking goes, they indicate that a hundred and one parking stalls are required and a hundred and eighty-three are provided. However, motor vehicle car display and storage is included in that. So that's thirty-four parking stalls. So that leaves one hundred and forty-nine parking stalls for customers, sales and service, and employees. So typically with the car dealerships, we request that they split, you know, the car display and storage out and we don't include that in the actual parking provider. So also, just nine hundred and forty-two square feet of space was subtracted from the floor area to, to do the parking calculation. So just as per normal, we're asking that they identify that space, you know, is it the cannibals, what have you. So the one thing I want to just discuss, which I generally already discussed last week, was that the parking aisles don't come around, so they're blocked by parking. So they're basically dead end parking, or traffic aisles. And the fire marshal also met with us. The fire marshal hasn't given me formal comments, he says he will, but we went over his issues. So as far as fire emergency access, he wanted these stalls to be deleted and the dumpster enclosure to be moved. Just so, you know, vehicle, emergency vehicle could get, could get back there. Also, as far as traffic aisles, we require a twenty-four foot traffic aisle. But they, they really wanna maximize the amount of parking or storage of cars. So it was agreed that they could put, make this one way, so they wouldn't have to go for a variance for twenty-four foot wide traffic aisle. So, you know, no entry signage, maybe some pavement arrows, just to-
Right here, we said we were gonna put it right there.
Yeah.
This way, we knock these four, and that becomes an out, that's why.
Right, but we also don't want people turning here, so maybe another sign here and, you know, you know, an arrow. So people know what they're doing.
Arrows on the paper.
Right.
And we're gonna move this down to here.
So as long as that's okay with the board, that's how we'll go forward.
Where would the new cars load and, or unload?
Uh, we're getting to that.
Okay, okay.
We went over that.
Also, as far as loading, you know, I realize they're not gonna have a loading dock per se, but they should show a couple of areas where they would be doing the unloading, so.
That's why we left fifty foot here, the, the, gives it plenty of turning radius for the, for the, and you can see here, we got forty-seven feet. We had a huge area here, so they can come in, turn around and go right out, no problem.
Yeah, so I just suggested showing two, like dashed areas to show where the vehicles would unload. As far as accessibility goes, they were a little short on handicapped parking spaces, so.
We're gonna add them right here. Two, one we were short, we're gonna add two more right there, so we'll have one over.
And maybe a little landscaped area here.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're doing, this. So it keeps the forty-seven feet and it keeps that aisle open.
And also as far as handicapped access, they were showing it here from, through some islands that are fairly narrow. And so it would be a lot of up and down. So we had discussed putting it over here and then providing a, a striped crosswalk. So it would be a less interrupted pathway. As far as the RPZ, the water district is okay with the location in front of the building, but knowing the planning board's, how shall I put it?
MO.
MO, thank you. I just wanted to check with the board about having, it's an above the ground RPZ in front of the building.
Yeah, we just didn't like them out.
Yeah, well, the last time we did this, you agreed to, that we could put it here, so that's what we did.
Okay, that's fine.
What about electric transformer, they, anyone?
That goes over here.
Yeah, I did request some screening plantings for that. As far as exterior lighting, it's all gonna be all new lighting. They're gonna provide a photometric grid showing all the foot candles at ground level for the town engineer. The last site plan report had talked about the brightness of the interior lighting, because apparently there's some car dealerships who have very bright interior lighting, so.
These are not, we, we, these are hung right below the cars, so it's totally different.
So Jim said he would provide some information. Like I said, since there's residential use to the north, there's a requirement for a fifty-foot transitional yard with six-foot-high stockade type fence and landscape plantings. And the planning board can require, can require existing, you know, trees or woods to be maintained there as well. So like I said, the, the, since there already has gaps, it's put up by Millbrook, the applicant would need to put up a stockade fence along the rear. Also, the trees on site are kind of sparse, some are deciduous oaks, so they didn't really provide much screening, especially in winter. So the suggestion had been, in addition to the shrubs along the eastern property line and some small ornamental trees on the site, which they're gonna move back there, the suggestion was that they provide some evergreen shrubs to kind of beep, beep it up. So as far as supplementary guidelines, it was kind of unclear if the gates were proposed to be screened for the dumpster. I requested that they show the color of the slats and recommended black vinyl coating, coated chain link for the dumpster.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what we're gonna use. Yeah, and they put, you know, the slats and.
Yeah.
One of the supplemental guidelines is about deliveries and loading activities shall, to the extent possible, be restricted between eight AM and five PM on weekdays. I'm not sure when they have the deliveries, but I've heard that they're usually kind of in the middle of the night, if that's true, or early morning.
I don't get very many deliveries at night at all. I'm against it because I wanna look at the vehicle when it comes off the truck.
So, uh, do you have, I don't know if the board wants to put in any sort of condition about these hours for deliveries, especially because, you know, the residential use is fairly close. Or whether the applicant would be in agreement with, you know, eight AM to five PM, or I wanted to get feeling from the board.
Is that an issue for you?
I really don't know, I hadn't thought about it. We don't get much night delivery now as it is.
Can you control your delivery times and dates?
Yes, I can, I can tell them I don't want a delivery at nighttime, which is what I tell them now.
Okay.
Most of the time, not all of the time. Every once in a while, we come in in the morning and we find the vehicle there, and we have to deal with it.
Right, but do they show up and not unload until you get there, or do they start unloading before you get there?
No, they'll unload if we're there or not, if they come at night. And then they put the keys in a drop box, which is not my preference. I really don't want them to come at nighttime, and that's the way I direct them now. But occasionally it happens because you got a rogue driver. And he comes and he drops it and you have to deal with it.
Well, I mean, what the code says is to the extent possible. So if the board wants me to put a condition to that at that.
Yeah, I mean, I will continue, I will continue my policy of telling Chrysler that I don't want deliveries at nighttime.
I'd rather let it go.
They generally refer to it as business hours.
So we'll do a condition to the extent possible. And then we have a supplementary, some, supplementary guideline about parking lots with twenty-one or more spaces shall have orchard planting, which are small, one small tree per ten off-street spaces within the parking lot. Again, because it's a car dealership, they're not providing that. And I just wanted to make sure that's acceptable to the board.
We have a lot of planting out, we have it here and here in the front, but, and we have a lot, we have a large area in the back and we got ten foot here and ten foot here. To stop putting planting as aisles here, it's just, it's not conducive to, to stone plowing, parking car, I mean, it just doesn't work back there.
Is a lot of that gonna be used for car storage back there?
Well, the, the, I have it, everything's labeled, this is the cars for service will be here, and this is storage of cars.
Yeah, so I, I don't, can't see putting big trees back there that are gonna grow.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, in the code, I wanna make sure the board is okay with that.
Yeah, the reason this is service is because we have doors here, here, and that's where they're gonna park, I mean, if that's it.
And then there's also one indicating parking lots shall be landscaped with ground covered grasses or low shrubs for at least ten percent of this, of their land area. So they are gonna be adding a little landscaping here, but other than that, it's pretty much the exterior, the perimeter. So if the board's okay with that.
It means a percentage?
No, it doesn't, because they're really not, they're providing concrete.
No, these are planting, this is planting. If you look at the landscaping plan, this is planting, all this, all this is planting.
Right, but that's not within the parking lot, it's supposed to be within the parking lot.
So you're saying the boundaries are excluded from the ten percent?
Correct.
Well, this is in the parking lot, isn't it?
Right, so whatever you're gonna provide in the parking lot, maybe just make, make clear how much that is
Yeah, okay.
and then we can come back, you know, to the board, if that's good.
Okay, yeah. I try to push it all towards the front.
That's where we want it, that's where it's visible most.
Right. Cross access, basically, we're gonna, I'm gonna recommend future cross access on all the property lines because, you know, sometime in the future, this property may be redeveloped, the adjacent properties may be redeveloped. Right now, none of the adjacent properties have cross access agreements in place. Basically because, although this is Costco now, when the Foxwoods parcel was
All right away.
given over, you know, that didn't have any future cross access agreement in place, cause it was residential. To the west, excuse me, to the east, that's old development, so there was nothing in place there that I could find. So it'll just be in place for the future, when and if the board feels it's necessary, when any of these parcels are redeveloped.
I have to say something, but I had an issue with that, with not designating a future cross access. I've done that on other municipalities and whenever I've done a future cross access, it's always been designated as this forty to fifty foot area along this property line with, over here. I have an issue with them agreeing to do cross access on the entire length of the property. To do it over here, you're gonna take out his parking spaces in the future if this and these, these two on either side ever come in to, to link it up. If, if there's
Well, let me-
an area, if you're trying to link it up to the back to come out to commerce, that's, that's a different issue, but
Right now-
to designate it over here without it, putting it into his covenant restriction where it's gonna be, I have an issue with that.
Right now, we don't know how any, right now, it's not, doesn't really work, because number one, we don't have any adjacent agreements. And number two, if they were gonna connect to the front of this development to the east, it would, it would, doesn't align, it doesn't work. So we don't know how it's gonna be redeveloped in the future, you know, so to, to- So to, to, to designate a certain spot, I don't know if that's.
That's how I've been doing it in other municipalities. I put it into the lease and bounds description, where the future cross-access is going to be located. And I even put it on the plan. I mean, Jeff, you, you were a Southland.
We, we do that too, when there's a logical place where you can see it.
Mm-hmm.
This one, there really isn't. It's probably not even practical.
Well, is there one over here? I think you said no, right? There's no cross-access here?
There's no cross-access agreement in place. So we can't, we can't put it into, into, uh, we can't do it, actually construct anything until they come back to us with another plan for some changes. And, you know, then we would have to look at it and see if it was feasible or not.
But on, on the west side, if you look at the aerial, it does line up with their parking lot in a couple of places, in the rear and in the front.
Well, no, i- if you're gonna do it in the front, it doesn't align. See, see where the traffic aisle is? It, it's, doesn't work. Um.
Talking about.
You're talking about to the west, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, but we don't, we, right now, we don't have an agreement with them. So we can't make them connect at this point. So it'd be something in the future.
But if they come back for a site plan, pool expansion, that's when you do it.
So does the board wanna just say it's gonna be here, and then?
I mean, I'm just looking by the aerial. I can't tell you the exact location, but it looks like it lines up to their parking lot in the, in the front here.
Right, I, there's, there's a big, um, let me just take a peek here. Right, there's a big piece of grass there, but they, they could, you know, we could require them to build out an asphalt lane.
And what about the spaces that get taken out when you?
Well, there wouldn't be anything necessarily. It would, it would attach to the traffic aisle, or this traffic aisle, let's say.
No, there's enough room there to.
You're saying you wanna show it, right?
Yeah, I would like to, to show it someplace where it's logical to me. It's, you don't have it on either side. It's, uh, but that's something I can discuss with the staff.
I mean, again, we could, we could connect behind this building in their parking lot, but it's kind of unseen, and people are mostly parking up front, so I don't know whether it's really advantageous. Um.
The, the front strip mall has no, no traffic light out.
Yeah.
Uh, you have to come out of Warsaw Industrial Park, or you have to come out of Lo, not Lo, it's Costco, for a traffic light, and I, I'd assume that's what you're looking to achieve, not to just dump traffic a hundred yards further onto the road. So that any kind of access into that strip mall would be, would be worthless.
Well, we have done cross-access where there, it doesn't provide access to another traffic light, but it does allow people to go from one place to the next place. Um, and maybe in the future, it could be extended, so they can get to a light. Um, I just don't, you know, I just caution the board. You don't wanna get caught up in just connection to Costco in the future. Maybe, I mean, this is zone destination retail center to the north as well. So, you don't know, maybe that Millbrook will cease to exist sometime in the future, and it'll become some, some sort of retail center. Um, I don't know. You know, you don't know if this is gonna be changed to something else in the future either, twenty years from now.
I think what you're trying to say is it's smart planning for the future, but it's really not practical right now.
Correct.
We're gonna continue to discuss it.
Yeah, okay, great.
Ed, you'll be back here in twenty years from now, having the same discussion.
So I don't know if the board wants to make a decision now, or just to think about it.
Maybe look at it, I don't know, in the field.
Okay.
I think these cross-accesses are coming up all the time like this.
We have some time before we, uh, get to an approval, so. Um, as far as landscaping goes, um, they do provide, um, evergreens on the, um, perimeter, the west, east and west sides. Um, and they're showing some, um, tr- trees, street trees where there are none, um, to the west of the driveway. Um, however, it's not very varied. Um, it's just street trees along all country road. Um, so I was wondering if the planning board would wanna require some, um, planting beds in the front, or a, a line of low evergreens, or something more.
Make it look good.
Um, so would the board like the applicant to come back with some additional landscaping?
What's your intention to put cars up there?
Display them, so people can see them.
Do we show it on the site plan where they wanna do that?
Yeah, they're all listed here, sales.
Well, no, 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 no.
He's talking about the grass. We don't want cars on the grass, like.
Right, they're required to have a thirty-five-foot landscaped area, which, which they do provide. So they're not supposed to be having any cars in there.
Right, but if you put some kind of, you know, trees or, you know, shrubs, that'll prevent that from
True.
Being an option.
There are already trees along the road.
Uh-huh.
Uh, in the section between the sidewalk and, and the outer curve.
Those are staying, and then we're gonna add four more trees in here.
The question is, does the board want more than just street trees?
Um, you're gonna be talking to Kim on various things. If you guys could maybe pass that out.
Well, we, Jim and I are working on it.
Oh, okay.
So I just had indicated to him that I would ask the board about it.
Not if it interferes with showing car, cars. I mean, that seems to be the.
If it's a low landscape area.
Well, right, we wouldn't want anything, you know, six feet high, or even five feet high.
That's all I would do is put very low dwarf, some dwarf shrubs, and put them out.
You know, something two to three feet.
Out here, in this area right there.
Yeah, show that.
Okay, so they'll provide some landscaping in the front. Um, Jim and I had talked about the type of street tree they were going to provide to the west of the driveway. Um, didn't appear to match what was already provided to the east of the driveway. Um, so we talked.
Oh, they held up, what's there?
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure what they are, 'cause I can't tell, 'cause it's winter, but they were supposed to be little leaf linden, according to the, the old site plan. So, we had talked about, um, providing four of those, at least three and a half inches in caliber. Um, and then as far as, um, the rear, the transitional, um, yard, um, like I said, they were going to transplant some existing landscaping to the back, and then I indicated they should show, um, just kind of generally what, what they're gonna be transplanting back there. Um, and then, um, provide some additional plantings, um, where they're not gonna have these transplanted stuff.
There's a lot of mature trees in here.
Yeah, so.
I didn't wanna just rip them out of ground and get rid of them.
I would fill in where we need to.
Take them, especially here, there's some, some really nice stuff in here, some nice stuff in the parking lot.
Right.
We're just gonna take that out, and in this area here, fill this area in with them. And then if there's any spots that are not, oh, I was gonna put some cedar in to mix in that, that's all.
Yeah, we talked.
And not in front of the well, by the way.
We talked about doing some staggered, um, evergreens, like, um,
Cedars.
Cedars along the existing woods, and then putting the transplanted and other plantings in front of those.
Yeah, it's got some nice stuff there.
And then, like I said, like Jim just said, there's an irrigation well that's gonna be back there. So I just recommended that we leave that, a path to that, in case it needs to be maintained in any way. Um, so that's pretty much everything. Um, we needed some more, um, information for the title. Suffolk County Department of Public Works wanted, um, sidewalk dryways and handicapped ramps to be ADA compliant.
Yeah, we gotta rip these out. These, they put these in, and there's a new code out, so we gotta take the existing ones out and put new ones in. Basically, that's it. The curb cuts remaining where it is. As, as Karen said, we're gonna put the handicap walk here. We're gonna have, then change these to planting aisles. This is a more direct way, and put it over here. And that's what we have to do for them, but this basic front is not gonna change, as far as the curb cut.
All of your lighting is dark sky compliant?
Yeah, I have it on here, but they wanted a little bit more detail, which I'll give. It's not a problem. Matter of fact, it's almost.
So you're not seeking any variances for lighting?
No, it's, it's, matter of fact, it's just about done. Uh, we're just finishing it up now. All the, all that is done.
So the, the trucks coming in to deliver the vehicles, um, the turning radius in the front is fine if they're coming from the west on fifty-eight?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's plenty.
Okay.
This is thirty feet across here, and then in here, I have, I don't know, this has gotta be almost a hundred feet across. I mean, it's, it's enormous.
All right.
And there was two reasons for that. One, you can see the building from the road, and second was for the turning radiuses either way.
All right, that's basically it, unless it's gonna have any other questions.
One thing you said to me about the application, that was dated March, uh, for the subdivision. I don't know, I forget about that. It was March two thousand eighteen. You said it expired.
Well, no, I, it looks like we did, it was signed, 'cause Kim forwarded me a, um, one that was signed.
Oh, okay.
So it looks like maybe I just need copies of deeds and things like that, which I just.
Yeah, I just didn't want it to get lost.
Kim will provide.
Lost in the shuffle.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened there myself, so. But I'm glad it was signed.
Yeah, I'll just think of all the changes. I mean, I went over, Lauren.
You do it publicly.
No, it's just a lot of nomenclature, a lot of little things, yeah.
No, that's for you.
But, uh, it's pretty detailed, uh, it's a couple of things. I'll call, uh, Karen up on what are two things.
I start building now, Jim?
Uh, next week, month of.
So once we get a revision, we'll, we'll schedule the public hearing, and we'll do a secret resolution and all that good stuff.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, uh, discussion item for Hamlet Professional Offices.
It's a good time for young families going on vacation, so Doug Adams is in Mexico with his young family, Kenny Barrett with his young family is up in the Lake area, so.
You're it.
We, a month ago, uh, we sat down with Karen, went over the preliminary resolution, went over all the changes. So I'm pretty comfortable that her report will mirror everything that was addressed, that needed to be addressed. And, uh, it's a beautiful site plan. We'll always try to market it to a hospital, a medical group. Certainly won't be built on spec, so, uh, you know, we're gonna hold until, uh, until someone knocks on our door.
All right. Um, we had approved the preliminary approval quite a while ago, so I just wanted to give the board kind of a, an update. Um, this is in Wading River on the north side of twenty-five A. Um, it's kind of in the location across from the CBS. Um, it's next to a farm field to the west, and a, um, professional office complex to the east. Um, it's a split-zone parcel. Um, they're providing a stormwater retention area to the north. Um, and they were allowed to, the code allows them to extend the, um, the more intense use thirty feet into the more restrictive zoning district, so that's what they've done. Um, it's, uh, four buildings totaling thirty-one thousand one hundred eighty-one square feet. Um, let me just see. Um, one of the things the board had been concerned about was the, the, the woods, um, on the east side. Um, I had gone out there, and I felt that there were some, um, trees that should be preserved. And they've agreed to, um, retain the existing trees along the property line there. Um, the resolution does require them to put up a construction fencing, um, when they're constructing. Um, one of the things that came up during the, um, the last, you know, talks about the prod, project, was that, um, there is a dumpster enclosure for the adjacent property that, um, kind of impinges on their property, and, um, maybe.
I called up Jane Kratz, who's the attorney. You probably remember her coming here a couple of years ago for Mr. Farrell, who bought the existing center. He put his dumpster on our property. She assured me it's been moved.
Um, and then as far as the, um, farm field to the west, um, there had been talks with the owner of that property. Um, he wanted his deer fence to be protected, so there is a, um, six-foot wooden fence to be put up. Um, they had requested it be set back twenty-five feet from, from property line. Um, so there would be more, um, visual, um, 'cause they have a gate here. Um, and then as far as, um, just so the board knows, there's a, um, they have to have a water main extension. Um, and I believe that had, help me out here, Peter, that had expired.
We had a, we had a public hearing. We didn't post the money, 'cause we weren't finally approved. Uh, we'll have another rehearing on amended plan. I spoke to John Collins, the condition of, uh, a building from.
Right. Um, so, conditions that all landscaped areas and plantings shall have an automatic underground irrigation system, um, that all utility meters and transformers will be suitably screened from view of evergreen plantings. Um, and as far as, I put some conditions in about, you know, the cost of the water main, and it would all be upon the applicant.
If I read the draft resolution, I'm fine with everything you've mentioned.
And I did forward it to the Water District, and they were okay with it.
Of course, we've written some bullet shots.
Future cross-access agreements with the property to the west and the east. Um.
I have to go.
You've got something here, which was deer fence versus the stockade fence.
Yeah, you know what happened? Now, Mr. Cangello is the neighboring farmer.
Mm.
Uh, and we, you know, it was indicating, you know, what the plants going through his fence. I thought it was overkill, put a fence against a fence, but.
He wrote a letter.
Yeah, I'm fine. It's a fence against a fence, whatever.
So you're putting deer fence up to the back of the property, from the, where the.
He has a deer fence.
He has a fence already existing.
Oh, okay.
So he didn't want his fence damaged by either landscaping.
Okay, that's his, that's his deer fence, right?
Yes, it already exists.
Um, the only thing I had changed from the preliminary approval, um, was that, um, the traffic impact statement had indicated that, um, there could be, there could be changes to the Wading River, um, road and twenty-five A intersection, the timing of that light, um, to improve traffic. Um, and I had, I think I had indicated that that would be a provision of getting a building permit. I've changed it to getting a CO, 'cause I think that's when the main traffic would be, um, problematic. Um, so that's pretty much it, unless Peter has anything to say.
No, I always say the less side, the better.
I agree.
There's no traffic light, it, that's not what the DOT had recommended.
Right. Next step.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question is to Karen?
Yes, it was, it was all right.
Yeah, he said everything was fine with it.
Oh, thank heaven.
All right, which one is next, Joe? Seven eleven.
Uh, item three, no, Oakwood on the Sound.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, let me go get that. Oh, thank you. Okay. So I've given everyone a package, um, on the project. Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Hi, Tom.
Just your name for the record, please.
Jerry Waters.
Okay, so, um, this is for a, um, erosion control project at Oakwood on the Sound, which is, um, east of Halls Landing Road in Wading River on the Sound. Um, they had gotten a modified permit from the DEC for the, uh, work proposed, um, which was part of the packet. Um, the latest plans were forwarded to, um, the town's consulting engineer for review, and you have his memo dated February nineteenth. Um, we had done a, um, request for lead agency and coordinated review, and we did get a formal response from, um, New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation. Um, and the consulting engineer did take those into account with, when he did his memo. Um, so, basically, um, everything looks good, except, um, taking into account the, um, the parks comments. Um, let me just pull those out.
Everybody has Vinnie's comments?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. The proposed five-foot buffer between the revetment return and the Wildwood State Park property boundary is insufficient to avoid such impairment of natural resources. Um, they would like to request that the town investigate additional avoidance and, if necessary, mitigation measures. So, um- So, um, Vinnie Gordiello had indicated in his memo that he recommended a detail of the proposed temporary sheeting, which would be put up to protect the park property, um, that that be provided to demonstrate, demonstrates the installation or removal of the temporary sheet piling, as well as construction of the revetment would not impact or disturb the state parks property. And then he also said the town, as far as, um, mitigation, he said the town could require that the revetment be maintained and covered with sand fill material as a means of mitigation, uh, and beach replenishment should erosion occur. Um, so that's pretty much where we're at, um, and that's up for the board to discuss with the applicant. Um, and that's where we are.
Does the revetment prohibit fishermen and, and citizens of using the public beach at all?
I don't believe so, um.
Absolutely not.
No.
Absolutely not.
I'll pull out the plan that was approved by the.
Yeah, I gotta, I can't even read it.
I know, it's a little small. I'm sorry. Hmm, let me turn it this way so you can kind of see. This is the approximate high watermark.
Okay.
And this is the seaward limit of the sand backfill.
Okay.
Um, this is where they're gonna put up a silt fence. Um, this is the, the steel sheeting that's supposed to be put up, um, to protect the park property, um.
That's gonna be removed after the project is done.
Correct. Um.
All the fishing is over here.
I just came to make sure not inhibit the.
Oh, no, 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 I fish myself, so I, you know, I don't wanna lose my opportunity to go down there and catch a few, you know, fish, but that's not gonna win to fear the wall.
Proposed rock revetment is right at the base of the block, so.
Okay, just, just double check. The other thing is, the neighbor's claim valid that this project may affect his erosion or?
No, I don't see how that's possible.
No?
No.
Vinnie, you concur with that?
I, I would say a hardened structure has the potential to impact the water supply. With that said, when one designs these structures, they need to take that into account. And there are various aspects of designing these structures that minimizes the impact of the adjacent property. I believe that this design does that, and in my memo, um, I, I, I referenced a few of those design elements and criteria I feel, uh, supports that position. Um, the revetment is, is basically proposed in a location as land width as possible. Uh, that, that, as you can see, is almost buried at the top of the floor. The, the extent of the revetment is, is, the design that I should say, is to, in essence, protect the anticipated wave activity in the area. This, this width of this structure is approximately eight feet, you know, it's not twenty feet, and it's not a vertical wall. And as far as the, uh, slope of it, it's proposed one-on-one five, which is within the limits of what one would consider a stable wall. Um, so, along those lines, in evaluating this design, I feel that the design professional has attempted to minimize the impacts of this hardened structure along the shoreline. One thing in looking at this plan that, um, I have not commented on, or, or something that could be considered in addition to the detail of the temporary shoring is, at both ends of the returns, you do not want to make sharp angles. You want, in essence, almost take the end of that and put a radius on it to, to smooth transition, which I, I, I think with respect to how this thing would, would be built, um, that's how it physically would be done in the field. It's not represented in plan view that way, but, but the reality is that these returns, you can see that they, they do not bend back at a ninety-degree angle. They come in more at a forty-five, and that as that transition comes in and sweeps back in, uh, that would be more of a rounded construction. You can't, you can't build the stone, you can't put the stone down now.
Right, so your opinion, this is, takes in consideration as much as possible.
As much as possible.
Okay, my.
And if you look at the DEC, the DEC issued a permit.
Yeah, okay.
For this work.
Uh, quick question for Dick. Um, in the event that there is erosion caused by this, is it, who is on the hook? Is it the town? Um, is it the applicant? I mean, if the erosion is caused and it's a civil suit, I mean, is the town liable or?
Well, we can never answer the question of what the jury or a court would find, um, you're prudently relying on the professionals' give you advice, and you're making a prudent judgment based on that, so you have a sound basis to make your judgment.
Clear as mud, Dick, thank you.
And one other thing I'd wanna talk, if, if it's kinda mentioned in the design, their proposed purpose is revetment with compatible sand material.
Mm-hmm.
And that's kind of a practice that the DEC has been pushing on, these types of structures. And the, and the concept behind that is, in the event of a, you know, heavy storm activity, what you're in essence is, you're providing nourishment or soils that could be used to fill in the surrounding areas. And that's why in the mitigation that I had indicated in my memo, was that, you know, the board could say, hey, listen, you know, every year you're gonna go out there, you're gonna do an inspection, and, you know, if there are exposed stones, you're gonna cover them up, and you're gonna fill it in as, as per the original permit. Um, it, it kind of puts a little burden on them from a standpoint that it's likely the DEC permit doesn't say that, and it's likely that they might need to go back to the DEC to.
Emergency.
To, to do that work, but, but again, it's, it's, it's something that I've seen other jurisdictions do and require with respect to these types of structures.
What's the condition of these?
So, that's the incentive, Karen, that we should provide by that last sentence?
The existing bluff, the reason why we're here today is because
Just what you said.
Every year, we're losing all the sand that we're paying a lot of money to put on the beach, it's just being washed out. Years ago, when a nor'easter came in, we might have to spend five thousand to ten thousand just to replenish it. Now, when these nor'easters come in, they're taking all the sand out, it's sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars a pop to replace it. We have four houses on the west end that the DEC identified as potentially on the verge of being on the crest of the bluff or on the bluff itself, and they gave us the permit because they're trying to protect those houses, and they said the reason they're giving us a permit is because there's no place for these people to move back.
There's no plantings or anything on it?
There's plantings, that's.
That's proposed.
Proposed, which we're going.
But there is, there is none now.
There is plantings there, yes, there are, there are plantings, um, but they have been compromised over time. We've been replenishing them on a, uh, neat, as needed basis. Under the new permit, we're required to, uh, re-terrace, to replant, and also eighty-five percent of vegetation has to take. If it doesn't take, we have to go back to the DEC with a plan on how we're gonna address it.
Sorry, that's beach grass, correct?
Beach grass, uh, Rosa Sharan, they gave us a list of certain vegetation, it's actually spelled out in the list of what we can plant, and that's what we're going to do. Um, basically, on the, looking on the east side, the state park, there is nothing going down the beach at all. It's totally, it's, it's gotta be like a half a mile down to where the beach area is, where they actually swim. That area is just primarily used for fishing and that's it. That's, there's nothing in danger of falling down up there, there's no structures at all, it's just sand and trees and, and rock. So, this whole idea is basically just to try to keep these houses where they are. Uh, just so you know, in ninety-one, when we had a major storm, one of those houses, one of the four houses that's identified by the DEC, the door, the back door going to the cliff was right at the edge, so if you were to walk out the door, you would've been right on the beach, and it's a hundred, hundred feet off the ground. Those people over there, they sued us, they sued the homeowners' association, blamed us because we didn't do anything to try to prevent this. So now, you know, just imagine if they lose a house, I mean, they were suing just because they had to move back, and they did. Three of the four houses did move back, cause they had the room. So, you know, we're trying to, you know, protect ourselves and protect the people and see what we can do, and, you know, this is all we can do really, is, is try to get this, uh, rock thing going, and we're trying to get it to go as soon as possible because now these rocks have to come from upstate. Our contractor, Craig Lawson, says that, you know, you gotta worry about snowstorms now, that could delay it. We got the nor'easters coming in March, and, you know, we're like, these poor houses that are identified by, uh, the DEC, not by us, they're saying they're either on the crest or physically on the bluff itself, and, you know, we need to get this thing moving, so.
I just wanted to clarify that this is a, a modification of a permit, and it does say, um, refer to previously approved ref- bluff restoration, and it refers to the previous permit, and it does show, um, Cape American beach grass, so I don't see anything oth- other than that listed.
Whatever the permit says, Karen, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Whatever the DEC is telling us to do, that's what we're gonna do.
So, I guess.
Do we address, um, how the material's gonna get to the location?
Um, they're saying it's going to be coming from Hulse Landing Road.
Hulse Landing's right there, right?
Yes, yes, it's right off the land.
So, I guess the only thing is, if the board has any additional questions and what their feelings are about Vinnie's recommendation about adding a detail of the, um, temporary sheet piling, to demonstrate it won't affect the adjacent park property, and then whether you want to add a condition about, um, maintaining the sand fill material. Um, we could put in that they have to inspect it every year and replenish, but go back to the DEC first.
Well, I think the maintenance should be on them, but the detail for the, uh, sheeting, is that a difficult thing to provide?
No. Okay, so we'll provide, um.
Well, just one thing, when I had some discussions with, uh, Jeff Seaman, he had told me that I could get a maintenance-type amendment to the permit, so that we could just, every year, do whatever we had to do if a storm came in, that we wouldn't have to go and file for a new permit because we wanna, you know, fix it right away, if any damage occurs, we need.
With the DEC?
No, he said with the town, he said the town could do that, cause we had a maintenance permit on our beach.
But I don't know that we have the authority to allow.
We wouldn't have any authority over the DEC.
Material to come in each year if it's needed.
Um, we could perhaps do something as the town, but.
I think as long as, as long as we say, maybe Dick could help us with it, as long as we say that the maintenance is on the, the property owner, I mean, pretty much covered.
That's fine, that's what we've been doing in the past, and we had the sand, we had a permit from the town.
Include their approval, or, or ask the applicant to, um, include, um, placement of fill material up to a certain volume as is necessary for maintenance on an equitable basis.
In their permit.
In their permit.
In the, in the permit there.
Right.
Ex- exactly.
So, maybe, maybe, uh, Tom could make an estimate of what would be a reasonable amount to add as a temporary, uh, manual shovel amount.
Okay, so I can work with, um, Vinnie and Dick on language, once we get that, um.
We can do a resolution next meeting?
Well, I need to get revised plan with the detail of the, the sheet.
The sheeting.
Sheetings.
And the volume.
And the volume from Tom, and then as long as we get that, I don't see a problem.
We'll get it to you.
Two weeks, yeah.
Could we have a hearing like, you know, like I said, because I need to get the rocks on the beach before we can't even get them.
Well, I don't believe there's a requirement for a hearing for chapter nineteen, so.
Right, just a resolution at the next meeting.
Two weeks. So, we can do that, you think?
Yeah.
Providing that the information's provided.
Yeah, no, well, Tom, Tom will get you that, whatever you need.
Jerry will make sure I do.
Yeah.
Okay, well, good.
Come on.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Thank you. Item four, area real estate seven eleven.
Thank you, thank you.
Come on. So, I thought we had this all squared away already.
Well.
That's my plans.
Oh, you're, it's fine, no, we're not.
I just wanted, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I just kinda wanted to give the board, um, I think I gave the board a copy of this already, but I'm gonna give you a highlighted copy. This is the plan we had looked at last time, um, and the board had concerns about, um, the pinch point in the front and widening the traffic aisle, um, and then the applicant had come back, and I'm giving you another highlighted one with this plan. And apparently, the applicant had gone to the DEC and gotten some, um, preliminary comments about the new plan, and DEC had issues with it, um.
This is the new plan.
Basically, they said they're not gonna approve it.
This is the new plan, the second.
Why?
This is the new.
Gets closer to the wetlands.
Second one you handed out.
The one.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's an email.
Yes, the second one I handed out.
There's an email.
That shows the building further from the street.
There's an email that I sent to Karen, uh, that came from DEC. Here's what, here's what happened. So, we submitted the original plan, we had all these discussions, we revised the plan, um, to have the building, everybody remembers, facing, facing to the west. That plan was, um, was sent to DEC, cause we need their approval, um, and that email reflects the feedback that we received, and the feedback that we received was that they're never gonna approve this plan.
Well, I.
Because the buil- because, Karen, because the building, the building is, is closer to the wetlands, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and, again, the building that we came to originally was a conforming building, uh, conformed with zoning. Um, as, as good developers, we listened to the planning board, um, we did revise the plan, and we would've, we would've done that plan, but DEC is not gonna approve it.
So, we can't seem to make everybody happy on this.
Right.
Yeah, basically what they said, um, this new plan offers no mitigation and actually proposes clearing additional buffer. You cannot meet the standards to approve this permit while proposing additional disturbance to naturally vegetated portions of the lot and not providing any mitigation. So, I'm not sure exactly, you know, if they could provide any mitigation that would, um, be, make it okay. Um, so, um, I mean, the, the plan we had, the board had originally liked with a few modifications, the first one I gave you, that didn't show any, um, additional clearing to the buffer. However, the, the exit.
That's the yellow line that you showed.
Yes, the exit is further west, closer to the light. Um, so, I, I don't know what the board wants to do at this point.
Does DEC say anything about this one?
Yeah, the, if that's the original plan.
No, they didn't say anything about that one.
It was a modified plan, no.
They had seen the one originally, um.
The original plan, we, they, they were okay with.
With the building facing the street. Says parking in front.
They're, they're objecting that there's no mitigation on the revised plan.
That's right, because, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's because the building is pushed back. Remember, the issue was, we don't want the parking, some people didn't want the parking in the front, so we rotated the building, resulted in the building, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, being further pushed back was the wetland area. That plan was, was, uh, we submitted it, we sent it to DEC, Boulder Engineering did, and that's the comment that we received back, the one that Karen just read. The original plan.
This is the original one that the DEC looked at.
Yeah, that's, that's the DEC's actual markup to the plan.
So, with the road here, and then the building, you know, this.
But what mitigation were, were they saying?
They were gonna be re- revegetating behind this fence here.
Revegetating it back.
So, but why didn't you show revegetation on this one?
Because there's, there's wooded area right here. I mean, they could, they could show some.
But if you still showed it here, that you don't think they would.
But, this is, this is not the plan that they're currently proposing. This is the one that the board had said.
Okay.
They liked with a couple of.
Yeah, when we had left.
Modifications, and this is the last plan.
Right, but still, you could show, why couldn't you show it back here?
Yes.
Because this is the wooded area here, it's right up against the improvement.
The development is that much deeper, Mister Chairman, by rotating the building.
And they're actually getting rid of this corner of wood.
And the development is that much deeper, Mr. Chairman, by rotating the building, yeah.
So if the board would want, I mean, you could go back to something like the original plan, which didn't show any removal of woods. And there is area to put some sort of mitigation in here with plantings. They probably, they might have to go back to, you know, DOT to have, have a look at this, but I don't know, it's up to the board at this point.
I just wanna jump in as the civil engineer, one of the items, you know, we walked away talking about this plan last time, but one of the comments was to, to move the trash enclosure out of view also. Because with this layout, you're driving directly into the trash enclosure, you're gonna be looking at the gates and or the trash. So we were requested to tuck it behind the building, which is what resulted in that next one, which is the one we sent to the DEC. That, yeah, that one just didn't work out, yeah.
I still like the original one with the parking in the front, I know some people don't like it, it laid out the best to me. You know.
But everybody else didn't like it, not so much us, but the other agencies didn't like it.
Yeah, I understand.
What I tried to do is I tried to, you know, this has been going on for months and I tried to change it and I'm still gonna follow through with what I promised to do with you. But at this point, you know, like I always said, that, you know, we have to have DOT have safe with the two it announced, having one and having it too far to the west by the light was not a good entry. So having one in, one out, they preferred much safer, we were okay with the DEC in terms of, we're not encroaching into the wetlands. And plus, we're still leaving plenty of buffer for the town to build a walkway behind the property and continue along the water, but, you know, and not having it too close to the building either. And like I said, I was more than happy to try to do what you wanted to do and we spent a lot of money and a lot of time. And I was, and we were ready to start with the elevation part when we got the comments back from the DEC and we said, you know, now we gotta come back to the planning board and see if we can go back to where we started. And you guys being understanding and like I said, we're gonna work with the, you know, natural materials that you want, you know, whether it's the natural brick or some stone or some hardy board. Again, this is, you know, for you to, you know, for you to decide and work with, you know, ARB and the planning board to still have this project come out beautiful. I just can't seem to cite it the way that it was, well, not, some people want it.
Everybody wants, it's, but it's ultimately the planning board's decision.
Just, I would just wanna bring to the board's attention, this.
If the DEC is not gonna approve it, right.
This plan brings the building back further than this original plan you looked at.
Right.
So therefore, it doesn't leave room for mitigation. This plan does leave a little room for mitigation and doesn't cut into the buffer. I mean, the dumpster could still be moved over here, but, you know, like I said, the, the exit is moved further west.
And I'm sorry to chime in Karen, but that was one of the takeaways we had last time was, I thought we had discussed collectively that with the curb cut here, if you stack one or two cars, now you're blocking access to and from the site. So that's why we moved it further.
Right.
So on the next one, you could queue one or two cars exiting the site before it would impact the access to the parking. So that was the reasoning for widening and that's what pushes the building back. So again, all along, it's a catch twenty-two, we're fighting one thing or the other, so we're trying to make the access work, satisfy the DEC. You know, so with that original layout, we presented, the DOT was okay with it as long as one cut was ingress and the other was egress. And then we finally got through the DEC where they enjoyed this plan because we weren't encroaching and it provided mitigation measures that we could provide. And that's kinda where we stand today.
With the one that they approved, is the entrance then where the loading area is, is that going to be the entrance to the?
No, that's gonna be the exit, correct?
Correct, and technically, so.
This, this plan cuts off the, the front of the property, let me see if I have another plan that you can look at, I can do that.
It almost looks like this, you, you, the curb cut will be gone and people would just pull into any spot.
No, no, that's incorrect, actually.
I can actually.
You would ask for like fencing in front of.
If I could provide the history, this was the initial plan, I have enough to pass out. This was the original, original, original with two curb cuts, we had ingress and egress at both curb cuts. DEC, I mean DOT said no. Yes, absolutely, sorry.
How about if you reduce to in one way and out the other way?
And that's what the DOT requested, that, so that was the next plan we presented, which is this one, which is virtually the same, we just flipped the trash enclosure the opposite way. So it was at the ingress point, so it could be directly accessed by.
The town, the town committees, downtown committees didn't like that.
Correct, but now we're stuck because DOT approved this layout, DEC approved this layout and.
A cord between the rock and the hard place.
And I did what I could do to accommodate them by going and redoing the plans and moving it. I mean, it's not like I said, no, I was willing to do that to accommodate, I guess, ARB and landmarks, but now we got pushed back. When we were all in agreement to move forward, we got pushed back from the DEC saying they won't allow it. I'm not trying to use that as an excuse to go back to where I am, I'm just trying to, you know.
And then is it the second plan that you just had, the same as the first one as far as the location of the building?
Yes, it was just flipped to the left and flipped the trash enclosure to the left, it's the same depth off the roadway, correct.
They wouldn't approve that?
No, they, they would, we haven't presented that yet, yeah.
The problem was, we were trying to accommodate.
I know, I know what we were trying to do.
Yeah, not having parking.
I'm looking, I'm now saying we gotta come up with something.
Jeff, let me ask you the question, the property immediately to the west, what's the status of that?
That's, that's, that's a county park plan property, so if they wanted to do the, these long parking stalls that were shown on the last plan, they would need a variance or setback.
My plan, something here.
This county, this county is gonna buy it.
And do what with it?
They think they already own it?
The county owns the piece to the west, the further piece, I think they're under, possibly adjoining it.
That's correct. That's correct, and they're looking at making like a canoe launch, that sort of thing. It hasn't been decided yet, but it's gonna be like a canoe, that's, the town board would like to be a little bit more active, like a canoe launch type of facility.
Right, do we think that that, knowing that now where the ARB and the landmark people didn't know that originally, and that's why they opposed this plan. Now that that's gonna be, I guess, eventually cleared and opened up for access, would it change, do we think that would change their opinion? Because then we could go back to the plan that DEC and DOT approved.
I think their, their main objection was they didn't want the parking at the front of the property.
And in a perfect world, I would agree, this is a small lot, it doesn't lay out well any other way than this way. And I think if the elevations are done really nice, like the board's been asking for, I think that'll make up for the parking and we'll have a good.
Scott's honor, we promised to do, I said I'd do that for you.
My planning, my planning mantra is good design forgives a lot of sins, so if you have a well-designed building, that's if, if it all falls on.
But you've already had a conversation, I mean, I'm ready to help you with that.
That's my opinion.
No spray-on stucco, no spray-on, no faux.
I was doing a well-designed building as per your request, however it was cited. So, I mean, that's, you know, I said I would do that, I said it in writing, I said it, so I wanna make you happy, you know, I wanna do other things, so I want you to be happy.
We wanna be really happy. Correct me if I'm wrong, Eric.
Yes, absolutely.
I think putting a slurpee and a brick is just gonna be too heavy to carry, but maybe we could have a different type of reusable container.
Super big though.
So there's, so the one. No, I just, the only concern I have is I just really want, and you guys have been great, you've done everything we've asked, but no matter which way we've gone, every, one agency or another took exception to it.
Correct.
But I just wanna have a consistent plan here with the property to, to the west.
Yeah, it's just gonna be a pocket park. And the one thing that has been voiced to me is that there should be a continuity of the green belt behind this building to link the properties on either side of it.
Which we agreed to, we agreed to that before even knew, I had any issue.
Just wanted to get it up.
That's fine, and I mentioned it again, yes.
And I think pretty much on any configuration, you'd probably need that variance for twenty-five feet buffer to Southern County Parkway, so.
Alright, but if we have an agreement with respect to the layout, then.
Right.
Is it, it's a procedural step, you can get.
Exactly. We don't need variance for any of that.
I think impervious, no?
I think, no, if now that we go back to the original, we're fine.
We're okay with that.
We only went over the impervious when we had to turn the, every time we, that pushed everything back into the wet, that's what hurt us with the impervious too. So I think we should, I think we were at forty percent or thirty-nine.
Yeah, yeah, you're okay.
Yeah, that was, so.
So that would be your only variance perhaps.
Okay, so what's the board feel, I mean?
I vote for number two, revisions that's dated nine fourteen eighteen.
Is that the right one or?
Which one are we talking about?
Just make sure they're not all dated the same.
Nine four eighteen?
Nine four eighteen, sorry.
CPT one, revision date nine four eighteen.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Which shows the dumpster to the west of the building.
Yes.
CPT one, correct?
Yes. CPT one.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think the, the board wants to be really loud with the, the.
Building.
We're going to.
We don't even have to say anymore.
At the west meeting, you had said something about providing photos of something in Oyster Bay, which we never got.
Seven eleven?
Okay, great.
Yeah, I can sell them, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate.
Thank you.
We're in full circle.
Yeah, we did, it happens, it happens, thank you.
Good luck, Ash.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'm welcome.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, thank you.
Joe, this is all George's stuff.
Karen, thank you for helping.
You're welcome.
Your page is in all this. Thank you, Joe. No. Oh, what do I do with my agenda? There it is.
We're on page two finally.
Okay, next item is Chase Bank improvements.
Unfortunately, I don't see any representative here from Chase, they received a copy of my staff report, they were aware of the meeting, but I'll still present it and just relay, you know, whatever transpires at the meeting to them.
Did they say they were coming?
Uh, it was expected, I had put a call into the applicant about two days ago, just following. When this project came before me and landed on my desk, we had considered handling it in a de minimis fashion. The applicant was questioning cross-access, so I, you know, I said, I'm like, alright, let it go to the board. There was some contention that Chase wanted to just withdraw the project before the presentation. I said, I'm like, let's go to the planning board, let's present it, you know, I think it's a little premature to just pull the application before it's heard, so.
Why do they, why do they have to?
Well, I'll, so I'll, I'll get to that, we will. So we've received a site plan application which is proposing site work and lighting improvements at an existing Chase Bank located at fourteen fifty Old Country Road in Riverhead. The site work is being proposed in order to facilitate the installation of a drive-up ATM lane near the southeast corner of the existing building. The building currently has a drive-up teller window on the eastern building facade, but there's no outdoor ATM access. This execution of the site plan will require the removal of some sections of existing asphalt and curbing and approximately seven parking stalls will be lost in this area. There are lighting improvements to both the building mounted lighting as well as parking lot lighting. Site plan application is considered an unlisted action pursuant to SECR. Part two of the EAF was completed by a planning staff on February twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Based on a review of the application, staff recommends that the proposed action will not have an adverse impact on health, safety or welfare and a negative declaration can be issued. Coordinator review is optional and not recommended.
They're only improving the lighting on this building, because, and this is like a fifty acre lot.
Correct.
And it's a lot of lighting violations.
That was, that was one of the issues, you know, we had an application previously with Harbor Freight Tools where I was in direct communication with the landlord of that property. That made the facilitation of the changing of the lighting a little more easier.
If somebody could one night go towards the back of like Home Depot, there is some really bad lighting there. I don't know if we can address it this time or not, but it is on the same site plan, so I don't see why not.
There's so much bad lighting in this, the.
Well, maybe now's the time to fix some of it.
They put a whole bunch, the tenants, not their, I don't believe it's the property owner, along that bank of buildings where you have the Michaels and the Best Buy, put a bunch of floodlights on.
Yeah, there's actually a picture of those floodlights.
They're shining up in the scifers and.
So, yeah, that was one of the issues dealing with the site plan because the, the site was never broken out into a condominium map, so it is one fifty acre parcel, I mean.
I think Home Depot was cut out, wasn't it?
No.
No, it wasn't.
That whole, that whole site going through, access to the Riverhead Landing Apartments, that's all one parcel.
Okay.
So that was, that was one issue that made it problematic, I mean, they are proposing to replace non-compliant lighting with compliant lighting.
On their piece?
In, like, in their, in the vicinity of their site, I mean, it's difficult again, because when you say the piece, it's all.
So the other lights that you referenced on the property, the spotlights, are they violation, in violation?
Absolutely.
Anything, at, at this point, after the amortization period expired, everything, you know, any, any commercial lighting that's above sixteen feet, not three thousand degree Kelvin, not dark sky, is non-compliant. You know, it's one of these things that it could be addressed through code enforcement.
No, my question is, is the floodlights that they put on, were they compliant?
They were, they're never part of the approved site plan.
Okay, so that should be an issue that the town should do regardless of the site plan.
Right, yeah.
That they should be addressing.
Yeah, they should. Because the other lights, even though they're tall, they're compliant with the approved site plan, so.
What I'm getting at is, is it fair for us to require the whole property to redo all their lights?
No.
Just for the bank to put in a drive-through?
No.
Especially when you're telling us, or telling me that they're not compliant before the code change, so that's something the town should be following up on.
Yeah, but it's two different, two different people. The, I'm sure the improvement would be done by the bank.
Right.
But the lighting would be done by the property owner, you know, even if we just single out a few of the really bad ones, like up by, behind Home Depot, it's.
Yeah, and the floodlights along the.
The floodlights, the floodlights shouldn't be.
Correct, and even when we're looking at this administratively and internally as staff, we were never going to bring the whole.
In compliance, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's something that'll require, you know, code of course, yes.
As the lights break and it takes some mill, but there's a couple of really bad ones, we should kinda take a look at those now.
Alright, I'll tell you behind Home Depot, you said?
Yeah, if you go ahead now, you'll see, right now, sound avenue, look left, you'll, you'll see.
Yep. Alright, so we kinda jumped. So the scope of work is really limited to the, what I'll call the southeast corner of the building. They are proposing to remove asphalt curbing to construct this drive-up lane. The area of removed curbing will be extended to create a straight drive-through ATM lane. The ATM will be here, accessible from a vehicle with traffic exiting back out to the parking lot, it lines up with the existing alleyway. And then this existing, what I call turnout to the parking lot will just be restripped and relocated.
This was originally done this way because it was a Krispy Kreme and it was a drive-up for donuts.
I like that. So, again, one of the significant issues that we had brought up on the reason why the board is seeing this is the cross-access to the parcel to the east. Which the planning board had granted final site plan approval for, it's a twelve point zero eight acre parcel located to the east and the planning board approved the Garston Retail Center. The final site plan approval for that site plan was granted on August seventeenth, twenty seventeen, which approved fifty-eight thousand six hundred and seven square feet of retail development. There was a condition in that site plan approval that a cross-access agreement shall be submitted in a form approved by the town attorney for the area depicted on the site plan on the western property line that would connect to the adjacent Riverhead Center shopping center.
Right, but isn't that wetlands?
No.
It's not?
No, there are, there are wetlands on the Garston property, but not in the vicinity of the, of cross-access. So basically where the proposed cross-access is on the Riverhead Center parcel, there's an existing row of three parking stalls, which actually lines up and coincides where the cross-access would be required.
So when they designed their shopping center, they accounted for that, and it's ten feet to the property line, all of it is ten feet.
No, historically, this is something that the planning board has desired, it's never been able to obtain it, as I understand, there was contention between the landlord, and it was just something that they never agreed, the property owner.
Not, not the Garston, the Riverhead Center?
No, the, the Riverhead Center, it was something that they've just never agreed to and we've never been able to obtain it.
And Mr. Danowski is here. And Mr. Danowski is here, who has a long tour in knowledge of history of this event.
Yeah, we, we depicted on our approved plan, uh, that you could see it's right next to the, as Greg was saying, this location. Planning board had previously recommended the cross-access, so the Home Depot Center got approved, but it didn't get done for some magical reason. And so, Mr. Garston, while he was alive, said anytime there's an application that dealt with the Home Depot Center, maybe the planning board or someone could make this happen, and you wanted it to happen because there's an existing light at the center. So we've had different applications that were considered by the planning board on that Home Depot Center. And, and so, we've already provided the, the interconnection. We're willing to do the improvement on all property, they just have to match it up. The town has standard language normally, when they're ready for two homeowners to, two property owners to connect. To say grantor to grantee on one side, grantor to grantee on the other. You improve them to town specifications, and, you know, and subject to the continuing rights of each grantor to take care of their own side, all right? And anybody that, that causes injury to the other as a grantee, you know, that doesn't get waived. So it's pretty easy, normal, historical set of two documents, or even one, that the town would require of a property owner. And so, we will cooperate on our end for sure, but I don't know they go get the order to cooperate.
Did you reach out to him?
Um, I've been, my communication has been with the project expediter. Um, I've relayed that, whether or not they've communicated with the landlord, property owner. I know they've spoken to Chase, and that was part of the reason why Chase was sticking up withdrawing, because, you know, extra expenses, they gotta go through attorney, you know. So I have not gotten an answer from the property owner.
What's the status of the Garston property right now?
Ready to start building pretty soon.
Uh, they actually have final, they're just waiting for the SWIP to be finalized. They're gonna be ready to rock and roll pretty soon.
And the original resolution to approve Riverhead Center, there was no language in there at all?
Um, I didn't go back that far and look at the whole resolution, I mean, I can find that out.
The recommendation was the planning board, but when the site plan got signed, and it might have been at a time when the town board had controlled site plans, planning board merely recommended. It was that old.
Riverhead Center's not that old.
Yeah.
Yeah. May, may have had a Councilman Tenshaski on the board.
But the planning board was, I mean, it's just a question from my own time reference, but the planning board was empowered then?
No.
No.
When Riverhead Center was.
No.
All commercial site plans were approved by the town board.
How long have you been on the planning board?
Long enough, I know, he's right.
You weren't here then?
I don't think that changed till.
Then that's my question.
But we couldn't do it.
Oh, you didn't have authority.
Either, either way, when the, when the, the site plan got signed and approved and finalized, there was no cross-access provided.
It was two thousand two, two thousand three that the planning.
It would be helpful to know exactly what it said on it, in the, in the resolution.
Sure.
Regardless of who approved it.
And then, I guess lastly, even your board, uh, while Bill Duffy was representing their interest here, before he left for me at Masters East, uh, he even, I think, wrote in behalf of the town to the owner of the property, uh, and, uh, he didn't get any result as a result of that writing. I think you have a letter in your file that dealt with the fire protection and everything else, that would be something a town was looking to achieve.
It's good planning.
I've been, uh, in the town for close to seven years. We've had a proposed restaurant at the big building, uh, Pat Moore represented that interest. They disappeared. The IHOP used to be at Boulder Creek, used to be at Crab Shack, we tried to get it at those times, we failed. We tried to get it when Home Depot put their generation type thing behind their building.
But when you say we failed, what does that mean?
We, we reached out to them and asked them, would you please provide the cross-access, and the answer was a no response.
Got to put it in the resolution, it's part of the covenants.
But the problem was, it wasn't a planning board action at the time.
Yeah, so the, the, you know.
It became a deal breaker.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, while I understand the proposed improvements are sort of minor in nature in relation to the whole site, I mean, the bottom line is, it's in for site plan review. We do look at the whole site, I mean, but we don't know when the next opportunity for the planning board to.
This is minor in nature too, though.
And the problem is, is with this site, though, this is something to consider. You're never going to see in our lifetime, in my, my professional opinion, anything of substance being added to the shopping center. You're gonna see tenant changes, mixes of architecture changes, and that's about it. So, if we don't get it for this one, there's gonna be more tenant changes, and we'll, I don't think we'll ever see it.
Well, is that the only major issue you really had, Greg? Um, there was some issues just with the proposed lighting fixtures. They do comply with the height requirements, and they are dark sky, but they're being proposed as four thousand, so, I mean, that's just a minor change. They've gotta come down to the three thousand degree Kelvin.
So, judging by their absence today, and the fact that they made a statement to you that they may withdraw it, I think we have some time for them to make up their minds what they want to do, and also share with the board what the original approving resolution said with regard to Riverhead Center and the cross-access.
All right.
Some lighting questions then, too, right?
Yeah.
I'll have a lighting question.
Yeah, lighting question. Uh, I did note that the, on the photometric plan, the lighting levels did seem extremely high at the site. And I mean, I know there are state requirements for lighting at ATM facilities, but I mean, they've got photometrics here, you know. I believe I saw fifty-eight at one point, which is, I've seen, I, I've never, I've never seen anything like that, usually you see five point six, you know, something.
Looking for the sun.
Yeah, so that was just something I wanted to, wanted the applicant to clarify. When I did a site visit, there is an existing transformer in the, near the southeast corner of the building, uh, which is located in an island. There's absolutely no landscaping in this island, it's just, you know, gravel and pebbles. I recommend that just putting some landscaping in there, just to screen the view of that transformer.
It's pretty much green, though, when you, you've got the big berm there, right? From, you can't see it from fifty-eight.
You can't see it from fifty-eight, but I mean, when you're on the site and, you know, beautify the site a little bit, um, it's just a recommendation. I did look at the reduction in parking. When the site plan was approved, uh, the parking requirements were one per three hundred square feet. They've since been relaxed now to one per two hundred and fifty square feet. So the loss of seven stalls over the entirety of the property is not gonna have an impact on the compliance. So re- really, the biggest thing for this, you know, minor changes to the lighting that they're proposing, the cross-access is really the significant issue. And again, I mean, if we, we don't require it as a condition of this approval, who knows when we're gonna get another chance to come in and get it.
Agreed.
So.
It really makes sense on this one.
I mean, I, you know. Yeah, you know, I mean, as I, it, I can go to the applicant and tell them that, you know, if the planning board is gonna require this, yeah, they may just walk away with the application, but, you know, I, I, I think we need to stick to our guns because, you know, for just traffic flow on fifty-eight, you know, instead of having people leaving this, go to the other center, I think it's just, it's the right move.
So let's take a look at the, the resolution from Riverhead Center.
All right.
And if there's something that we could stand behind strongly, I mean, they may not get another approval for the whole property, if they don't agree to it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this, 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 this one little ten-foot section is so critically important, because you can go from Home Depot over to Osborne without going to fifty-eight.
No, I know. It makes sense. It makes sense.
Huge.
All right. All right, so I will, uh, I mean, it, it sounds like if I'm reading it correctly, we are gonna stick by this cross-access, and I will relay that to the applicant.
What they want to do with it?
Could be up until then, yeah.
I'd like to see the, the approval resolution. Okay, AT&amp;T, Middle Country Road, item six.
I'll go through this quickly. Uh, we've got another administrative cell tower application proposing to modify an existing wireless communications facility, which is located at six two three two Middle Country Road. Uh, the site's approximately eleven hundred feet west of Waiting River Manor Road, and is located in the RB eighty zoning district. Subject parcel is two point two acres in size and is improved with a pre-existing four thousand square foot building, uses a warehouse, uh, as well as the communications facility, which consists of a one hundred and two foot tall monopole, equipment enclosures and related appurtenances. Surrounding area consists of a commercial trailer sales facility at the east and Finks Country Farm to the west, with a small pocket of single-family residences located approximately a thousand feet north. Proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to SECR with coordinator review being optional and not recommended. Staff recommends that the planning board assume lead agency and issue a negative declaration, as there will be no adverse environmental impacts. They are proposing to swap out equipment on the towers, uh, as well as some equipment in the ground. There are no generators being proposed as part of this application or anything that's gonna generate any noise. Uh, staff has reviewed a structural analysis report for the tower and foundation, prepared by a New York State licensed professional engineer, which indicates that the tower and foundation have sufficient structural capacity to facilitate the existing and proposed equipment. Um, and the structural analysis for the mounts indicate that the mounts for the proposed and existing equipment have sufficient structural capacity. And again, both reports were prepared by a New York State licensed engineer. We've received an RF analysis report, prepared and stamped by a, well, prepared by a site-safe RF compliance experts, stamped by a New York State licensed engineer, which analyzed the RF exposure from the existing and proposed communications. And, uh, the report found that the maximum power density at the upgraded facility is less than one percent of the maximum permitted emissions levels established by the FCC. Uh, did indicate that they will require yellow caution two B signs to be installed at the subject site in order to be compliant with FCC regulations. And those, the installation of those caution signs is, is a condition of site plan.
What is that, for worker safety?
Uh, I think it's just, uh, worker safety, anybody going through the site. That's it on that one.
So, the FCC compliance report, that takes into account all the carriers?
Yes, it did. The, the report indicated that was comprised of all the carriers.
And the structural was stamped by a P E?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item is, uh, AT&amp;T, twenty-five Manor Lane, Jamesport, Jamesport Fire Department.
Again, another administrative cell tower modification, uh, which proposes to modify an existing eighty-foot communications tower, uh, which is located at a facility behind the Jamesport Fire Department headquarters at twenty-five Manor Lane in Jamesport. We've received an owner's endorsement, which was signed by the chairman of the Jamesport Fire District, board commissioners, authorizing the performance of the work. SECR, it's an unlisted action with coordinator review optional and not recommended. Staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency and issue a negative declaration. Now, this one, there were some discrepancies, which I had noted with the RF analysis and the structural analysis. Uh, the RF analysis was prepared by the SiteSafe Company, and was prepared by, uh, stamped by a professional engineer licensed in Arizona, which again, at the last meeting, I had relayed to them that we're, we're gonna need that report to be certified by a New York State licensed engineer. Now, that report found that the maximum power density will be less than one percent as of the MPE, as established by the Federal Communications Commission. But this information does seem to be at odds with a previously reviewed and approved application at the site. The Verizon Riverhead three site plan application, which was approved by the planning board on December twentieth, two thousand eighteen, included an RF analysis report, which stated that the actual power density from all the equipment at the site will be eight point five, six, seven percent. So this is a significant discrepancy, which the applicant will need to provide a report to, either if it was incorrect, or they'll need to correct that and demonstrate.
In other words, Verizon was approved, now AT&amp;T wants to come onto it.
Well, AT&amp;T is already there, they're just modifying their equipment, but yes, the, the report submitted for Verizon stated that the power density was eight point five percent.
So that's why we don't have a resolution.
So there's a huge, you know, from saying less than one percent to eight point five, that's a huge discrepancy.
Well, they changed any antennas, so that's really the question.
Yeah.
I'd be surprised if it had that some, that much of an impact.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, it's just a question, I, I'd like clarification, uh, you know, in a report.
Maybe just be one percent, not the eight percent.
No, it's, it, the, the report indicated that the total RF emanating from the site will be less than one percent, whereas a previous report said there will be eight point five, so. It's just something I, you know, I would like clarified, RF analysis report stamped by a New York State licensed engineer, which clearly demonstrates the actual cumulative power.
Can you share the other one with them?
Yeah, yeah, I've alre- I've already done that, I think he's just talking to his design professionals. Um, and there was also an issue with the structural analysis report for the tower. The report was prepared by a New York State licensed engineer dated October thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Now, this stated that the tower and its base plate are stressed to seventy point one percent for the tower, and ninety-nine point six percent for the base plate. Based on the timing of the submissions of these applications, this, you know, this structural analysis was.
No, I'm, I'm talking.
So the structural analysis was prepared on October thirty-first, twenty eighteen. That Verizon Riverhead three application that I had mentioned previously was approved in December of twenty eighteen. So being that there's really no, you know, you've got ninety-nine point six percent stress on the base plate, I would like to see the engineering report updated to clearly indicate that it's taking those into account, because.
Well, I, you have to ask, you know, what they're replacing, are they lighter and smaller, is it less than the wind load?
Well, that's, and, so, so, w- again, with this, I gave the applicant for this AT&amp;T site, I gave him a copy of the plan that was approved for the Verizon, so I'm gonna have, he's gonna have his engineer look at it and just certify that, okay, they took into account this Verizon.
Does the fire department operate off of that tower?
Uh, it's not clear, I'm not sure, I can find out if they are.
Could you find out? And then, next question would be, if they do, are their emissions taken into, uh, into account in the compliance report? And then, question for Jefferson. Are these applications time-sensitive?
Yes, they are.
By law?
Sixty-two days, I think it's sixty days.
But what if there are significant questions or deficiencies that are identified, does, it's still, and they don't respond timely? I mean, what, what position are we put in then?
Get back to the complete application position. If you don't have a complete application, then the time doesn't run, so, I, I, you know, they, they can't submit.
I mean, we have some significant questions on this.
I think there's definitely at least a pause, not, they continue on ongoing, the clock doesn't keep ticking.
Okay.
The failure to have it signed by a licensed New York engineer.
That's a flaw.
You know, is a fatal flaw. Education law requires that if you submit something to a local government, it's signed and prepared by a licensed engineer.
Okay.
Just moving on, moving through the rest of it real quick, the structural analysis for the mounts, found that the mounts had sufficient equipment, sufficient capacity for the existing and proposed, and indicated that they would be at nineteen percent of their structural capacity for the mounts. So again, there, there is some groundwork being proposed, swapping out equipment, some tower work being proposed. So again, the biggest thing with this one is we want clarification for the structural analysis report and the RF analysis report. Both need to be stamped by New York State licensed engineers, and they both need to take into account what is existing on the tower, what is proposed by AT&amp;T, and what is approved but not yet installed from Verizon.
Including the fire department. Okay, next item on the agenda is RGR Ventures minus subdivision.
This is a continued discussion of a four-lot minor industrial subdivision, uh, which was proposing to subdivide an existing eight point seven acre parcel into four lots. Um, the parcel is located within the industrial A zoning district, and it is located on the northeast corner of Manor Road and Middle Country Road. When we had last left off with the planning board, um, staff had raised the issue of having common access for the sites in order to reduce the amount of curb cuts off of Manor Road. The applicant has come back and is now proposing lots one and two, which are the two northerly lots. Uh, they're proposing a common access for lots one and two, um, and they are, would like to have individual curb cuts for lots three and lots four. That's based on the potential future development of this site, the applicant didn't feel that a common access was appropriate for what they may be putting there. So we are now in a position where if the board is okay with having potentially three curb cuts on Manor Road, we can move forward with scheduling a public hearing on this application.
Can't double up on the other one, see?
So, the, the thought process is on lot four, that's probably gonna be a, a more, a, a different use than probably the other.
than probably the other three lots, because of its exposure on Middle Country Road. It can never have access off of Middle Country Road due to prior easements and things like that. So, you know, just basically, industrial lots are not like, we talk about our retail and Route fifty-eight having common cross easements and things like that. Most of the people that are going to own these parcels are going to want the privacy of that parcel and the security of it. So, you know, I can't see if this becomes, and I'm going to use the word of retail use, but maybe something that wants the exposure of this highway and splish splash and whatever, and is allowed by code. They're going to want a separate entrance. They're not going to want to share an entrance with an industrial user who's here, and nor does an industrial user want to share an entrance with a, I'm going to use again the word retail user. It just means that their use might be a little more predominant, may have higher traffic levels, where, you know, these guys who are here, they're probably going to be industrial users that are distributors or things like that. You know, we've talked a little bit about allowing maybe this place as being a solution for the car issue of our Riverhead dealers and things like that on an outside storage. And again, they're going to want separate security for those measures if they are approved later on. So, I just look at this site, we've left it as the larger site. It does have some restrictions of this parcel. Any curb cut that's going to happen on lot four, there's going to be restrictions that, you know, it has to be so much from the intersection, this and that, to have safe turning radiuses and things like that. So, it's not like a curb cut's ever going to happen here. It's probably going to hap, I think all planning says that it should be at least seventy-five feet back. So, again, this tangent is two hundred and twenty-nine feet. You know, it's probably going to land up here, but again, it needs its own, in our opinion, it needs its own access. You know, this one, it's basically, you're kind of forcing the issue, so we're okay with it, but this is probably, you know, the access is not going to be a hundred feet wide. It's going to be, these guys are going to share a driveway, and as soon as they get up over the berm, they're going to want to have their gates and their security and everything else. Nobody wants anybody ever to enter an industrial site who is not a guest or tenant.
So, what did the town do down here with this drainage problem?
One thing that's interesting, Stan, I drove, when I went up to take a look at Demchuk, I went through that real great, and Gia went in there with tobacco and put a pretty significant ditch in there, which is, to me, it's old school, but it works beautifully. I don't know how well it's working now, since we haven't had a big rain event like we did that last time, but that's a huge improvement over what was previously there. I'd like to see more of that throughout.
Which was probably against this covenant. You should know.
I, I remember talking about that, something with the state, right, wasn't there a state?
So, when they built this road, they basically, to me, the covenant is obsolete, because the road is, the state built this road is my understanding of previous history, and in doing so, they just wanted to make sure that these slopes were never where water would land up on the road. So, they are very important here, and you see that there's a swell off of the county road or the state road at this point, that deals with the watershed of the roads. Why it's here, and because this incline is rising, I don't understand these particular easements, except that maybe if water were to shed off of the farmland, like we've seen it in the old days, most of the gradient you're seeing going this way, but if they did, they didn't want this to wash out the road. So, obviously, there was an issue there, you guys have found. I hope he hasn't dug it across where we're putting a common easement, because then it would kind of make sense to let us put easements anywhere and let it be determined what is better from the highway department to do. So, this has been done out of a recommendation from your planning department? What?
That can be dealt with it safely.
But if you're making me put in this cross easement at this particular point, you now have created a problem between the public corridor and where you're telling me I can enter this property, where if I didn't have this, we then could generally, at that point, say, hey, my curb cut should be here, you have a swell here, can I put in a culvert there?
I still feel it's safe when you deal with it, because now the conditions have changed with the time we approved the subdivision.
I mean, I have, you know, again...
So, it entered somewhere else.
Nobody has gauged where that is or whatever, but it always can be relieved with a cull, you know, if we do whatever.
I was just going to say, I, you know, I haven't actually gone out there and marked off the distance, but I believe it's on that, because when it was reviewed by engineering...
You don't think it comes this far?
I don't.
Lavender's right across the street from here, is it?
Yeah.
Where's the aerial view?
It's across the street.
The lavender farm is to the north here, but I don't know if it's...
I believe this is...
You think it doesn't reach it?
I think it's like over here somewhere.
It starts over there?
Yeah, it's somewhere in, if it's not equal, it might be a hundred feet south.
There's a question of water. And I was looking at Greg's map here. We know the one who's too far is only a thousand feet, but the other was only four hundred feet.
Well, yes, this was an issue.
And I just have a feeling when you go to the health department...
So, we haven't dealt, we are beginning to deal with the health department. What's currently proposed on these lands will be within, so, under the current rules of health department, I have three hundred gallons per acre. So, I have six hundred gallons. That would allow, on a two-acre parcel of fifteen thousand square foot building, and on the front parcel, I think you could get up to about a twenty to twenty-one thousand square foot building, currently under what's allowed to leach into the ground under three hundred gallons. If public water does come available, I can double up my density here with the use of Pine Baron credits, okay?
In terms of water, not necessarily zoning.
Oh, no, zoning too, I can have thirty thousand square foot buildings on eighty thousand square feet.
What I'm saying, the Pine Baron credits does not give you a variance from the zoning dimensional regulations.
Correct, but under our zoning regulations in industrial A, I'd still be under the percentage of...
Allowed zoning, okay.
But I could build a thirty thousand square foot building. The question here is, I'm willing to accept for now that there isn't water available here, that I have a limitation of what can be built here. Okay, so, the water has a double-edged sword. Am I willing to bring it? So, when I went to the water department, they said to me, the only place you can get water is to continue down from Edwards Avenue to us. When I asked about the fire hydrant that's in Split, they said that's on Splish Splash property. So, I don't know the truth about that. And nor did the water district ever get a cost of going from A to B. So, and you brought up last time, which I've just started to research, and I'm going to go to the water district, is what is the cost to bring it from Toomey around the corner? Because again, this impacts the state road, right?
The other way doesn't, and...
The other way doesn't.
It's all off the road.
It's all off the road, it's currently in the thing. So, but yet, the water department has never, has only given me one alternative, to bring it from the west east. They've never said just cross, just like you've just suggested, it's only four hundred feet to here, can you extend it? Now, you've got to remember also, this property is not in our water district. It would have to be extended, which is not a hard feat, okay? And obviously, if I could bring the water main here, this would be the right place for it to cross. I don't think, I think this lot, when you look at it, would be accessed from Manor, because these are long properties that make it all the way down. There's no access road along here. So, it would be the beginning of bringing water in your loop or do whatever, but A, no one has pushed it, except for the health department asking the question, and B, you know, again, the only thing that the water department said was, this is where you go. They went to their people, they got the price of, I think it was about six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars to supposedly build the main. That probably doesn't include all of the extras of the engineers watching them build the main and this and that, but...
If you don't have plans to build it out right away, you're not sure what you're going to do, why don't you just run a well? You might get a ten year...
So, I can legally put a well, we've put a well, we've tested the water, it is fine. We've sent off those results to the health department, but it's just a matter of them saying okay to it, you know? One of the things is, so, again, I don't want to use the word legally, but we can build our fifteen thousand square foot buildings, which meet all the requirements of all the agencies, and put a well to service each one of those buildings, put in a septic system if required, and go on with life. Yes, you are restricted to the size building you can put there unless you can get a health department variance or increase your flow, which the laws are there to do that almost automatically, for me to double up by buying a Pine Baron in reference to the health department.
You'd be gambling on the water quality too, though.
Water quality of?
The wells you put in.
We just tested it, it's fine.
You said you had, it was tested?
Yeah.
Where's their well on there?
No, I just put in a test well here.
How deep?
I can get you all the results.
It's not important for me right now, but depending on the use of that front lot, you would have to become almost your own community water system.
Because of?
Because you said it was going to be retail or a restaurant, people working there.
We don't know what it is, that's why I was afraid to use the word retail to you. But if this became a gas station that had a fifteen hundred square foot convenience store, it doesn't, it's not a restaurant, okay? There are a hundred uses that could go here that don't have that public, I don't know why you're saying what you're saying, but...
Because the deli just to the west went through the whole thing, and he couldn't afford to do all the sampling that was required, because it was a public building with people coming in there, convenience store, whatever it was.
Okay.
But not...
I don't know those answers.
Not for today, not for today. But question to Dick, what did we just do across the street? Didn't we have the authority to waive the public water? Because they weren't proposing any building over there? But didn't the town code require it as part of a subdivision approval?
We approved the subdivision, we came back at the last meeting. We put something in the resolution, I'm not sure a hundred percent exactly the wording, but it was something...
We evaluated the site plan.
Yeah, we acknowledged it wasn't in the water district.
It's not in the water district, and we said that it was too far to bring it, and they had to go to the health department, which is what Richard's saying, he wants to go to the health department and take his chances.
Right, but we approved the subdivision over there without the water being extended.
You didn't require a water extension for the subdivision. And you can take the same position here if the health department wants to grant it.
Well, we also won't...
We, Riverhead's had a pro-water extension policy generally, you know, where you try to analyze that the next person, there's always the next person.
There's always the next person.
And Richard's the next person to the last next person, so, he's anxious to wait perhaps or not wait, and it may work out properly. You, from a purely requirement standpoint, you are not required to make him extend the water district. You could find that it's proper for him to extend it, but that's so teed.
At this point in time?
At this point in time.
See, one of the hard parts of, I'll say, your water district and sewer districts are that as you require developers to extend mains, that are not just going to their sites, but in this case, extending a main, I forget the report, but it's...
Twenty-seven hundred feet?
Twenty-seven hundred feet, which now services both sides of the road. In many cases, when we do public utilities, the deal is, is I'll spend that million dollars to get the water here, but as each one of these persons hook up, they have to reimburse me for the cost of the frontage that they have. So, at least I know, maybe in the next millennium, I'll get paid back for that. But why is it my responsibility versus your public water responsibility, that's a authority and agency, to not expand their water? They're a public water authority, as you see...
They don't have a need to.
Their public purpose is to provide public water. I'll tell you what Suffolk County Water Authority says...
Totally different.
In Southold.
Totally different.
It basically says, it's our job to bring public water to every individual within our scope, and we will make through taxation the possibility. So, it's a difference of opinion...
No, 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 they can't tax you.
Who can't tax us?
The water authority.
Absolutely, through their fees.
That's not a tax, it's a fee.
I'm sorry, so through your water fees, you could extend all the way through.
I'm not, I'm not trying to debate the water issue.
But, but that's...
You don't need it right now, but...
I don't need it right now. And if the time arises and I need it, then it will be economically feasible for me to do it, then there's no question. You know, like, we've already said, we actually own the Pine Baron rights that, we own six Pine Baron rights, which could take three of these lots and be able to double the density if I brought public water. We always knew that. And as public water extends this way, and if we're still the owners of the sites and want to expand them at that time, that's the economic thing to do. So...
The whole purpose of going down the road was just to get clarification from Dick that we are not violating any town code by doing this like we did to the parcel across the street.
There aren't many situations like this with Riverhead, because of the extensions over here.
Yeah, I just, I'll bring up when we were looking at Calverton Manor, while they're in the same vicinity, the zoning on Calverton Manor was much more restrictive, whereas here you have industrially zoned land, which has much more intensive development potential, rather than a lot where it was basically like twenty-something acres of APZ development rights sold, so...
That's on the other side.
Correct.
But again, I'm handcuffed by the health department...
I understand.
Until public water would ever be brought there, so...
Again, this is just, I mean, if it goes forward, this is something that, you know, the board's acknowledging, and if it's approved, you know, that'll be incorporated into the approvals. Question at this point, if the board is okay with the access on Manor Road? I do have a resolution on there to schedule a public hearing if the board wants to move forward.
Yeah, that's what we asked for, we did it, right?
Yeah, yeah. I did, there was one edit, I had messed up the date in the resolution that was sent to you. I corrected it, so now they can be compliant with the postings and the mailings.
Right.
Timeframe, so...
Well, it's just a scheduled public hearing, but if and when we get to the resolution, the language for the public water extension would have to be the same as the parcel across the street, which we did two weeks ago, right?
Yeah, yeah, we can include that, so...
All right.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okey dokey, see you in two weeks. See you next month.
Next month.
Is it in two, no?
No, 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 it's going to be, it would be the first meeting in April.
April, oh, not even then, nice weather by then.
Nice weather today.
Yeah, well, we didn't see much of it.
No.
No. Okay, the next item actually was taken off the agenda for Silverman. So, before we do the resolutions, any public comment on any matter in front of the planning board or on the resolutions?
I did just want to comment on two of the resolutions before we get to them. The first one is Resolution nineteen dash thirteen, which classifies action pursuant to SECR and grants a farm stand approval for Lavender by the Bay West, which is on Manor Road across the street from Mr. Israel's subdivision. I made a slight revision after speaking with town attorney Bob Koskevich. Condition number one was removed from the resolution. That said that the applicant shall install no parking signs along their frontage with Manor Road. We did include a condition here with the planning board in this approval, authorizes the planning department to send a letter to the town board recommending that no parking zones be established on both sides of Manor Road.
I wanted to bring it up during the vote, why?
Well, so, the reasoning, the lavender farm during their peak seasons can be extremely popular. One, we don't want people parking on the street, because you've got, you know, cement trucks and concrete trucks barreling down Manor Road. Just looking forward, I could see a potentially dangerous situation where if during their busy seasons, if their parking lot's full, people are parking on the road, you've got kids, families coming in the street.
We park on city streets, New York City, we park on streets and Main Street. This is a country road where there's a pretty wide shoulder. To me, it makes sense to park them there. To me, it makes sense to park them there. I don't know, I, I think I'm, you know, kinda opposed to that.
You have a pretty big ditch on the, on the east side.
I, I, I agree with you on the east side.
But when he was here, we spoke about, you know, having abundance of, of people visiting when they, the lavender grows.
I believe the applicant's here. He's here, yeah. If he wants to come up and, if he has any.
Sure, and judging by the success out in Orient, East Marion?
Yeah, East Marion.
We asked about overflow parking, and I believe you said you had provisions for that.
Correct. Yeah, so there is a, they did on the site plan, I believe they showed sixty-eight parking stalls. There is an area that's shown as overflow parking, right now it's high brush and grass. There were two conditions that we included in the resolution, just saying that the applicant shall be responsible for the orderly parking of vehicles in the delineated parking areas depicted on the site plan. And we also put something in there that, in the event the town board does not establish the aforementioned parking restrictions on Manor Road, if during normal operation of the farm stand patrons are found to be parking on Manor Road, planning board reserves the right to reopen the farm stand application and shall require the applicant to expand the proposed parking area to the degree necessary to ensure that all patrons can utilize onsite parking.
Are you for that?
I'm in, not really. I mean, I, am I devoting, am I gonna be forced to devote half of my farm to parking?
We park on public streets, we park in city streets. I don't, I don't see the issue. But that's just my personal opinion.
Just go back to the number spaces that you provided, sixty-eight seems to be a lot to me.
Right.
Now, I'm guessing that you put that in there based on your, your other facility and, and the, and the activity that was mentioned.
Correct. Correct, and, and as he said, I, I'm open to having an overflow lot to accommodate in the event that there needs to be more parking. So we, we haven't, we have not developed the whole, we haven't planted the whole property yet. I'll show you. So my intention right now is to clear this area over here as overflow. So in essence, I'm going to be.
Yeah, but that's gonna be limited in time, because sooner or later, they're gonna do something with that parcel.
This is, this is.
This is all one.
This is all, this is all.
Oh, that's your.
This is all, yes, this is not, so up until the line.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then i- in the event, I can always add another row potentially. So far, we've only planted lavender over here, and this is all high brush. But I, you know, I intend on clearing this and maybe even a little more.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wasn't talking about taking up half the lot, I mean, you know, the area kind of seemed, you know, ready for it to be just.
Right, right.
If you sort of had just extended your parking lot, if it was necessary, I mean.
Right, that's fine, again, my, my, my concern again is that, you know, who, who then decides if we're gonna reopen the application because?
Or if somebody parks in the street, they're gonna come back and punish you.
Exactly.
Well, I think that's what, that's what could happen.
I mean, I.
And people will be.
They only park in the street, well, so the other, the issue too is that if someone, if I'm closed and someone stops on the side of the road, decides to take a picture, am I gonna get penalized because I'm closed and they're, they're, you know, so.
It's only gonna be on Saturday and Sunday and during the busy season that that happens.
Right, if the board doesn't find that these are, I mean, I put them in there just because I'm like, you've got heavy industrial vehicles traveling down this road at a lot, you know, high rate of speed. Or seeing that there could possibly be an issue, I mean, I didn't think it was a significant request of the town board to establish no parking, so I mean.
I'm in favor of what you've put in, in the way that, but I'm in favor of what's in the resolution.
In favor of the no parking there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's board vote, however.
Yeah.
I think it, at the very least, on, on the opposite side for now.
Yes, they don't have to.
Again, there, there's that gravel over here, I mean, people are not gonna be parking far away. That's not, you know, once they see that they have to park, they're not gonna, they're gonna drive around, go somewhere else.
You got sixty-eight parking spaces, that's a lot.
Not when those three weeks of the, three or four weeks of the year come around.
Right, right. But again, that, that's why I'm ready to, that's why I'm going to clear this area over here. You know, maybe make it gra, you know, again, ju- just for that one time, I'm not, I, I don't implant, I don't intend on planting lavender over here.
When are you, when are you at peak season, or does it coincide with pumpkin?
Mid-June through mid-July.
Okay, so it's not the same as the pumpkin season?
No, it's, we're, we have, we have a very, very small bloom at the end of the summer.
Right.
But it's, you know, just certain varieties will bloom late in the season, and it's really, it's not spectacular like.
Do people seem to linger at the site, or are they just here to get the lavender or the?
Uh, it depends, you know, I, I have both, both customers. Some like to go and frolic in our fields and take pictures and, you know.
Frolic?
Yeah, frolic.
Frolic?
I say go to the vineyards and then come frolic in our field.
All right, let's leave it at that. Greg is frolicking in the, in the use of the.
We're gonna strike the requirement for no parking signs. Do you wanna, would the planning board want no parking on the east side of Manor?
I, I, you know, there's a bend there, and cars come around that bend pretty quickly, and.
I'm, I'm, I, personally, I'm fine with even posting no parking on my deer fence if that's, you know, just.
The town board has to.
Well, yeah, the, the question came up, but it was an issue.
I see.
It has to be done by a law, by the town.
So I'm not, so I'm not allowed to even put no parking on my deer fence?
If it's on private property, he can regulate where he parks cars on his property.
Where's your deer, is your deer fence on the private line?
It's set back, yeah, it's set back, it's not on the, the town property.
I mean, we would need to, the problem, that fence was put up, I mean, it's not shown on the plan, so I mean, you'd have to go through the practice of showing it on the plan, I mean.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
Yeah, the, when I, when I, when I brought it up to the town attorney, it was a question of, well, is it on town property or is it on private property? And it was just kind of the question where maybe it's just better to strike that requirement and just go with the letter to the town board.
I just, I don't think people should be crossing that street. I mean, that's a major fire lane too for the fire trucks.
Uh, look, one, one accident is more than we would want, you know, I mean, I didn't think.
You can't legislate human behavior. People are gonna walk out in front of cars, they're gonna be talking on their cell phones, so. Well, whatever.
So what's the, uh, what's the board's consensus?
Should we strike it or we don't?
You said that you wanted to leave it, right?
I wanted to leave it.
I would agree.
I agree.
But.
We always get outvoted.
Now, is that only a recommendation?
Well, so, yeah, the, the, the planning board will authorize the planning department to draft a letter to the town board. Whether or not the town board moves forward with it, that's a question for.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, if you just draft the letter, could you just make it that it was not a unanimous vote, so they know there's a point in counting.
It'll go to the traffic safety committee if we're recommending.
Yeah, it'll go for highways, they'll have to review it, and if they find that it's appropriate, you know, they can do something, but.
Excellent.
So we will strike the parking requirement, we'll leave the wording of the letter to the town board as is. Now, just one, would it, would it make sense to just show potential future parking area?
Was that in the resolution that there was overflow provided?
Uh, I mean, we just said the planning, planning board reserves the right to reopen the farm stand application. Um, I mean, I think if it's shown as a proposed future parking area.
He doesn't have to come back.
He doesn't have to come back to us, so.
What is striking? So we are striking, uh, you've ac, no, you've actually got the revised.
Yeah, the right one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, all right, so we will add, show proposed future parking area.
Overflow, it says overflow parking space if needed area of high grass.
It says it on there, so.
All right. All right, so I mean, I, I think.
Right.
All right, so we'll, we'll get on that. All right, before I send the letter to the town board, I will circulate it to you guys just to get your blessing on it before we send it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, so Resolution two on the agenda.
Resolution what?
Two on the agenda.
Number two.
I think a motion that we move Resolution number eleven of Riverhead Planning Board for AT&T at six, sixty-two thirty-two Middle Country Road, so moved.
Okay, motion made in second to approve Resolution eleven for AT&T granting administration site plan approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, resolution's approved. Number three on the agenda.
I move Resolution number three, Hamlet, Professional Building Offices.
Twelve.
It's Resolution two thousand nineteen oh two, oh one two, twelve.
Second to motion?
Okay, motion made in second to approve Resolution twelve, Hamlet Professional Offices, final site plan approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution is approved.
Number four, lavender by the Bay Farm. Resolution to approve a farm stand application seeking approval to erect a farm stand consisting of two cargo containers, thirty by forty, asphalt apron, parking area paved handicap stalls on a thirty-five point five acre parcel northwest corner of Middle and Manor. Second to motion.
Okay, motion made in second to approve.
Should that be revised? Should it be revised?
Reviser.
Everything was in there, you said, right?
Yeah, I had given you guys a copy of it.
Oh, okay.
Motion made in second to approve Resolution thirteen, lavender by the Bay Farm Stand, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution's approved.
Resolution number fourteen of Riverhead Planning Board for RGR Ventures for a minor subdivision, public hearing, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve Resolution fourteen for RGR Ventures, minor subdivision, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution's approved. Number fifteen.
Number fifteen, have we resolved the fence issue with the neighbor there, I believe?
Yeah, they moved the fence in two feet from the property line, which is within that ten foot buffer.
I'll move Resolution fifteen, classifying the, uh, Secra action to grant administrative site approval for the San residence at nine eighteen Main Road.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve Resolution fifteen for San Residence Office Conversion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution's approved. Okay, any public comment on any matter in front of the planning board?
Take a motion that we move the minutes of the February seventh, two thousand nineteen, planning board meeting, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the minutes of February seventh, two thousand nineteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Before we close the meeting.
Minutes are approved.
Chairman, Greg, I know, I think it was two weeks ago, maybe, we had a discussion about overlook drive.
Mm-hmm.
And everyone's gonna get together to meet, did that ever happen?
Uh, not yet, we haven't been able to meet with the applicant and the attorney yet, but we will. And we just gotta get the fire marshal approval for it.
Okay, see if you can get ahold of the applicant or whoever, because he's telling me that what's going on, what's going on. Let's see if we can look to Ben, don't worry, the, thank you.
Okay, next meeting is Thursday, March seventh at seven P.M. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.